It's six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order tonight. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll find the flag. There it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion, please, to approve the agenda. Linda and Isetta. Discussion. All right, in all in favor, John?
Yes.
Linda? Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Our first item tonight is our presentation by Dr. Vicky Remus. We're so happy to have you with us again, Vicky. It's been a while since you've been with the board, so. We're happy to have you and it's all yours.
Thank you. Can I share my screen, Tina?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. So thank you once again so much for having us tonight. And I wanted to make sure that you were aware that we have Phil Rose, who's your representative on the Finger Lakes BOCs as one of our board members. He's your liaison. Zachary Burnett is one of our PTEC students. And I'm not sure if she's on yet, but Kathy McQuiggin, our principal, will also be joining us.
Hi, Dr. Ramos.
You are there. Okay, great. So because it's all about students and making sure that you are totally aware of the impact we're having on students. I'm going to pass this over to Zachary. So Zachary, it's all yours.
Can everybody hear me well?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Zachary Burnett. I am a junior at PTEC in the Mechanical Technology Pathway. Next slide, please. So I chose to attend this program to get a head start on my career and further my education. I'm interested and want to learn more about 3D printing and the engineering design process and how these processes align in the field of mechanical technology. So at PTEC, we have the equipment and people to teach us about our pathways that we want to go into, for example, my mechanical technology. So I'm able to familiarize myself with this equipment and that people use in the industry daily. So for example, we get to use our 3D printers to print objects and pieces for equipment that we get to build. I've also learned about CAD and electronic theory, which we've just started to get into a bit, and how I will apply those skills in my future profession. So I'm excited to learn about the engineering design process and how I can design and create custom machinery. So I may be able to design and build a custom piece of machinery myself one day. Next slide, please. So I plan on becoming an engineer, but while PTEC, I've learned that there are many other options to explore and choose from as we visit those industry partners and manufacturers in our region. This program provides students with tours and introductions to these companies who may want to hire us as interns while we are in college and then outside. So success is possible at this program because we provide materials and equipment. We need to develop the knowledge and skills for these careers. But it's not only mechanical technology. There's also information technology and information control technology. We also have a new pathway that will involve be involved with medical health information technology, I believe it's called. That's going to be introduced fairly soon, I believe. But PTEC has provided me with the opportunity to also earn college credits. By the time I graduate next year as a senior, I am on track to earn between 30 to 36 college credits, which is equivalent to a full year at college. So now I'm getting my high school credits, but I'm also getting these college credits, which will significantly make my life easier and overall prepare me for the future. So I'd like to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity to learn and get a head start on my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary. I'm going to pass it over to, I know Kathy McQuiggin, principal, is on to see if she has any other words and then if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. Thank you all for hosting us this evening. We're really excited to be part of your meeting. Zachary is just one of the few, many students that you have from North Rose, and he's doing an outstanding job representing us in a mechanical tech field. It's a pretty hard field and pretty rarest because that can lead to a four-year engineering degree, but he's doing a wonderful job. Students here, as he said, have the opportunity to go into mechanical technology, instrumentation, control technology, or soon to be a smart technology program, or the IT pathway, which has web and mobile design and/or networking and cybersecurity. And Zachary also referenced that we would be hosting in the future, hopefully, a medical program, which really isn't medical as it is so much health information systems and technology, which could lead to a medical coding and/or degree pathways in EMT, paramedics, CNA, a nursing degree with FLCC. So we're really proud of all of our partners and especially proud of all of our students. So thank you. We really appreciate tonight.
Thank you, Principal McQuiggin. And so I'm going to open it up to the board in case there are any questions for Zachary or for Principal McQuiggin.
Zachary, what kind of math are you taking?
So last semester I took college algebra and currently, right now, I'm taking pre-calculus, college level.
Excellent. Good. I am really impressed with what you're doing there. It's really, really great.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Zachary, Zachary, what do you think would have been your outcome had you not been at PTEC?
Honestly, before in eighth grade, I didn't really know what I wanted to do. You know, I had my interests, but when we had our previous principal, Mr. Raffel, he came over to present for North Rose. And when he presented this idea that I could get a head start on my life, and I've always been interested in technology as a kid, like I was fixing my mom's laptop for helping her download music. So I've always been kind of messing around with that stuff. So it was like, hey, I'm fairly knowledgeable on this. This could be a great opportunity. The head start. And I've been having a great time. I feel that I've learned a lot more than I could have with a standard education. And it's not something that BOCs could offer where they learn. Sorry, I'm trying to think of my example. I have friends in auto tech, I believe. You know, there's the cooking, veterinary. That's not anything I'm particularly interested in. While useful skills to definitely develop wasn't something I was personally interested in.
Are you?
And you have a great. Go ahead, John.
Are you getting any internships during the summer months?
Through the summer months, last year I took it upon myself to get a job at Marshall Farms, where I'm currently working. So if I was offered an internship at one of these businesses, but that's, we would have been starting to visit more of the
Yeah.
manufacturers this year, but due to COVID.
Yeah.
It's been difficult, but if I was offered an internship, I would most definitely take it up.
I imagine COVID has put a hindrance, is a hindrance for a lot of things.
Yes, that's for sure. I'm doing virtual back this year. Even still, I'm getting all the stuff I can at PTEC. The teachers know what they're teaching, that's for sure.
Well, thank you, Zachary. And you have a beautiful site there, right at the college, right? It's a beautiful, yeah.
Very convenient because, so how, what if for normal school, if I were to drive there because I have my own vehicle, it would have made it a lot more difficult, but having it onsite will make it easier next year to go to these classes on FLCC. Because I remember at the old school, the seniors, they'd have to get on laptops and connect to their professors virtually, which was not as well-known as it is now, not as standardized, I'd say. So it'll definitely make commuting easier.
Yeah.
Sure.
Zach, I'm impressed. Now, I just heard you say FLCC. Is that your plan is to go on to Finger Lakes?
Yes, because we've already started to connect with some of the professors. So not only would it help me get a standing among my peers, that's also the solid program in itself.
Good. I just want to congratulate you. You've given a nice presentation tonight and going in with almost a full year of college credits under your belt. That's going to be just fantastic for you. So really well done.
Thank you, sir.
I think your your work and getting involved with PTEC shows a high level of maturity on your part. And I'm very impressed with that. Have, do you feel you've missed anything from a regular high school experience while you're involved with PTEC?
No. I mean, besides, you know, being like the lack of more classes. In high school, you really only get to know one class. So at North Rose in eighth grade, you know, there's the advanced kids and then everybody else who is taking the standard route. So when I was part of the advanced, it's kind of the same thing at PTEC. It's you're among these close-knit group of people that you come to trust and develop these skills with and learn to help each other out. And I find it actually very interesting working with people in the other pathways as we develop our skills, because that can lead to when we go out and expand, we already know each other. So when we go to develop like an entire piece of, say, machinery, you know, you have the coding, you have the designing for it, and then the putting the go together and wiring it to certain buttons or actions to take, we could, we could effectively build our own machinery once we get the knowledge and materials.
I see a business in the future.
Possibly. That could be an idea.
Zachary. Linda?
Yes, I wanted to say to you, you really gave a great presentation tonight in the way you've responded to questions. It's really shown how well-grounded you are as a person, but it's also really exciting for us to hear some of the newer things that are going to be coming into play in the, in the next few years for students, because there are so many opportunities out there that many high school students don't, aren't aware of, and even younger ages aren't aware of. It's, it's great to have this kind of program available for students in all of our districts. Thank you.
Thank you. But the program's only growing more and more every year because while I was a freshman in the senior class, it was a group of six people. Because some kids, it was like, what is this program? Is this really for me? But as kids started making it more and more and started sharing with the rest of the school, you know, when we'd interact with everybody else, word spread about this program. And people who were actually interested just keep joining and joining. The classes keep growing and growing, which is really great to see, because now only can I possibly pass on my knowledge to students that are coming in, but hopefully make it more comfortable for them than it was for me, you know, seeing the six seniors.
That's wonderful. Anyone else?
I have a question for, I think it was Kathleen, that principal. Hi. So my question is, do you feel that your students are competitive for scholarships at the various colleges?
Absolutely. I feel they're ready. The students here, we do a lot of programming. We do a lot of teaching of soft skills. And we have a career exploration class, which is what Zachary was referring to, where he's able to explore and work with other kids in the other pathways. So they'll choose a product or an idea that they want to, really an innovative theory, to kind of decide what it is they want to invent and then explore that idea. But within that, we're teaching those skills and how to present, how to work with others. We had a career day last week where we had a few vendors in. I got an email this morning where five students want to set up an internship next week while they're on break to job shadow. So I really do feel that the students are ready for that. We're doing a lot of advanced classes in terms of English on their senior year where they work with English 101, English 113, for a technical writing program. And again, bridging that gap between not only classes, but the soft skills that they'll need to be successful in the industry. And that includes applying for scholarships and getting ready for whatever avenues may be out there to help them be successful.
So with a scholarship for, let's take Zach for it as a perfect example. Now, would a scholarship come through our school or through PTEC?
He would apply through anything that he would know through your school, your school district as well, because although he is a PTEC student here in program for the day, it's much like the students that go to CTE centers. They're in program for the day, but they still very much are a North Rose student. So then they would apply for scholarships within the district and anything else that may be out there. We also work with the advisory committee over at FLCC. So we're tied into anything else that may be available there. We're working with a college to matriculate students. So although there isn't a need for financial aid, because tuition to PTEC in terms of college books and supplies is covered, we also want the students to be able to, if they want to, to live on campus. A part of that is matriculation. So if that happens, we're able to do that. And next year will be our, well, actually this year, kids graduating will be the first year that we've matriculated students to FLCC.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your presentation. And it's good to hear all of this as we start working with budgets. We certainly need know that this is money well spent.
Thank you, Zachary. So you get to leave. We'll be quicker. You can stay if you want to see the rest of the presentation. But thank you so much, Principal McQuiggin. I can let you know, Paul, that they have a very dynamic counselor who is constantly in communication with all the component districts so that the kids don't lose out on any opportunity. I will be very brief. This is our summary of your district for this year. These are the number of students that you have participating with us. Accelerate U is a program where if there, a kid is in need of a certain class that you don't have, the kids can take that course with us, which a lot of districts took advantage of during, during this hybrid or virtual learning time. The estimated total aid payable to you this year will be 1,583,776 cents, 51 cents, $76.51. But that is estimated at this point. And then I'll pass this over to Phil, our BOCs board member.
I'm, thank you, Vicky. I'm laughing over here. It was estimated down to the penny. I love it. So I want to say thank you to the, to the board for allowing us to, to be in the lives of your students, but also the lives of your teachers and your parents and everybody else that's really part of your district. The BOCs is a cooperative at the end of the day, right? It's 25 different component school districts or 47 districts. If you start to look at Edgitech, and we really pride ourselves on being able to put together that one plus one equals three or four or five or whatever we can do, but we can't do that without the participation. And we really, we really appreciate that. And we are very happy to be making success possible and bringing all those resources from the districts together to, to do the kinds of things we just heard about from Zachary. What a great presentation. What a stellar young man that, that we see here. We're just so, so thrilled that you were able to share him with us for a little while. So thank you.
So proud, Zachary. And so at the very end, this is our commitment to you. The Board of Education does hold me accountable to these values and to our commitments to you. So when they are looking at our work as a BOCs, what has been that impact, you can see that Zachary has represented very well our impact. And thank you, Zachary, for that, as well as increasing the capacity of your district to be able to continue to participate in collaborative opportunities. I mean, we're very, very involved, especially this year more than ever. I see Megan at those meetings with our regional instructional council meetings. What are the best practices? What have we learned? What are we succeeding at? Though the pandemic, we tend to talk a lot about what we have not been able to do. We can't forget that many of you have been very successful in your staff. And many of our students, Zachary, that amid, that missed the pandemic have been able to continue to succeed and to achieve. And so we have worked hard this year to make sure that those supports are in place and that we are sharing best practices within this, this new year that presented with the pandemic. And our commitment to try new ideas and to be part of something new in tomorrow. And I think Zachary said it best. You have an idea, bring people together and see what it comes out of. And I would like to hope that our component districts feel that we have an open door and that we are collaborative and willing to think of something and as well effective communication. So know that our door is always open for good and those things that are sometimes not that great. And we hope that we continue to support each other and be collaborative as we move forward. So thank you again for this opportunity, Zachary. You've made us very proud. And to your parents, thank you very much for, for allowing you to be part of something new. And so at, at this time, I will stop sharing. And unless you have any questions for me, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much for being with us and very informative and well-done. So thank you. And we'll bid you a good evening.
Thank you very much. So good seeing you once again, board. Bye-bye. Bye.
Because this is our second meeting of the month, it's a meeting when we look at something in depth or have discussions. And we currently are receiving information on next year's budget and that is being developed. So Bob, Megan, we'll turn this over to you and we'll hear more of the proposed spending plan.
Thank you, Cinda. So we are at the point in the budget process where we've put together our first full draft of the budget, both the estimated expenditures and estimated revenues for next year. But I want to point out that this is a draft. We are still working through a number of issues as an administrative team. But we wanted to come to you with where we are in the process. I'm going to attempt to share the screen here. Okay. And I've got two monitors here, so I'm not sure what you're looking at. Are you looking at a a budget presentation report, basically the expenditure side? Are you able to see that? Okay. Tina nodding her head.
Okay, right. General fund, right?
Yes. Okay. So what we're going to start with is basically putting together estimated expenditures for next year and where we are in that process. So as I've done, you know, in previous years, I kind of try to draw your attention to numbers that maybe have a large shift from a previous year up or down and give a little explanation as to why that might be. And again, there's two columns that show change. There's the dollar change and there's the percent change. It's important to look at both. Because, for example, right here, you see a large change of 46%. That's a lot, but it's only $1,600. So it doesn't have a big budget impact. But the first point that I've highlighted here is in the, basically, it's in the superintendent's line. As you know, this year, we do have a deputy superintendent position also that's been paid out of the 1240 codes. And we deliberately this year supported that deputy superintendent position with appropriated fund balance that was specifically put together when we formed this year's budget. And so we do see a drop in the expenditure area there for next year, as that position will not be around next year. And in turn, we won't be appropriating fund balance to offset that. There is a slight decrease here in the area of business administration. And that's mostly due to some of the functions that we have at the central business office. We're reducing some services there. Our legal costs have gone up over the last couple of years. To be honest, we do know that some of that is tied to some of the issues going on with the capital project. Basically, I am proposing that we do increase that budget line from where it is currently. We actually, last year, overspent that. So you may be looking and going, Bob, why are you budgeting $109,000 for our total legal budget when last year we spent 129? It's, it's simply when we go over these amounts, that's where we will tap into contingency throughout the budget. And as you know, there are certain areas where we do have some contingency built in to basically cover unforeseen costs. And this would be a prime example of it. We have got an increase in the area of personnel. So we had reduced that budget area this year. We had made a reduction to our current budget of 70,000. And there are some, some needs for some support in that area still. So we are looking to increase some of that backup sum. We also see an increase from our current budget of $71,000 to 115 for next year, an increase in our support through Wayne Finger Lakes BOCs for the PR co-sir. And I do want to point out that this is not an increase in service from what we have now. It's an increase in service from what we had originally budgeted a year ago. So this year, we actually will overspend this area and have to take the funds from someplace else or some contingency. But as long as we know that's the level of service we need, we build that in for next year. Getting down into some of the program section of the budget. We do have a decrease here. And basically, the 2020 codes are pretty much principals and their offices that support. It can be their clerical support. It can be all kinds of materials, supplies, subservice through BOCs for when teachers call in and need subs. We do have a fairly good size reduction in that area for next year. Part of that is due to a shift and a reconfiguration of our administrative positions. Whereas in the past, we had a part-time athletic director, part-time assistant principal. So since part of that area is not coming from assistant principal anymore, we do see a decrease in this area. But in turn, you'll see an increase in the athletic director area. Basically, our technology section is the 2630 codes here. And this is specifically for computer-assisted instruction, as it says. Our largest increase is hotspots. So you know that when we went to the So you know that when we went to the virtual learning, we had a very large number of hotspots that we had to purchase. We actually, I think, spent about $132,000 this year on hotspots. We are not budgeting the same full amount for next year. It's our hope that we will not be to the point where we need as many hotspots for such a grand scale of virtual learning. But we do know that there definitely will be support needed. And there will be, I, I see a trend going towards more of the need for the internet than maybe we had before our pandemic experience, just to do the way that we're changing our educational programs now. We're reconfiguring the, some of the, the personnel in the area of guidance across the district. So we are recognizing a salary savings there. And down here, this is where I talked about the increase to a full-time athletic director. So we saw a reduction in the building assistant principals, but it's offset here. So it's pretty much a wash. Our transportation budget is up some. We had already gone through this in some detail earlier this year. And since then, one of the things that we did last year to help close our budget gap was we really cut down the contingency we had in the area of fuel for our buses. And as you all know, in the last couple of months, fuel prices have started to go up pretty aggressively again. So I did add a little bit more contingency into fuel. So that increased it some, but that's not the full amount of the increase here. We basically have annual increases for our staff. So those prices are going to go up naturally. Associated also with that is because we are at a higher staff and we're able to get away and not have to budget for contracted routes. We've shifted that money up into driver salaries instead. Youth programs and community services, this is part of the cost for additional SRO. So from our current year budget to next year's, there's, there's a fairly good increase. We're going from two SROs to three. But the other thing is we were able to get this year's budget down a little bit lower than we originally thought because the sheriff worked with us during the closure. So when the pandemic forced the closure and the sheriff's department needed some of the officers back on staff, even though we had paid for the year to have them, the sheriff was willing to let us kind of take that and credit it towards this year's bill. So that's, takes up part of our increase and the rest is for the third position. Civic activities, that's basically where we cover costs to run the driving range. A lot of the swimming programs, the fitness center. We do have equipment budgeted in here for replacement at the fitness center. We're kind of on a rotating basis with that. And we've also put in a, a new vehicle for the golf range to do the picking and the maintenance and stuff around there. Something we've been trying to do for a couple of years. Doesn't seem to make the cut when we get all the way through the process. So again, this is a first draft. And we really could use the cabot over there is pretty much shot. We really could use a new piece of equipment. So at this point, we've got it budgeted in here. So we get down into all of our employee benefits. The major shift we're seeing here is unemployment. We've talked a little bit about this already when we started talking about our reserves back in February. You can see last school year, we spent $3,000 on unemployment costs. And we had budgeted 20,000 for this year. I am recommending 100,000 for next year. At this point, we are seeing costs currently just partway through the year of about 65 to 70,000 already. So it's only prudent for us to go ahead and budget that. And as we get back into our reserves to adjust our plan in June, I will be recommending, as I've already alluded, that we need to look at our unemployment reserve. And we need to consider going back to what our old ideal balance was, which was a percent of payroll. We probably in June need to aggressively fund that again to help us get through these couple of years where we may have peak unemployment costs. And if we have a well-funded reserve, we can help flatten the impact on the operating budget here by appropriating some money out of that reserve. Down here in debt service. So we have two different types of debt service. We have serial bonds. And we have bond anticipation notes. And just a quick review for you again. A bond anticipation note is a short-term borrowing. We take, we borrow amount of money for a year. At the end of that one year, we pay that bond anticipation note or that ban off by either issuing another ban or eventually we want to go to bonds, which are long-term financing. Ideally, probably about 15 years, since we're a couple of years into our project, our bonds may be for only 12 or 13 years because we want to align with the state aid that will receive back. So I have shifted some costs in our proposed expenditures here where you see that there is a decrease in the bands. I'm not recommending at this point that we budget for more bands in next year because we probably will want it shifted to bonds. But the debt service in general is fairly stable. It's within the same area. Total general fund expenditures right now at this time, we're looking at an increase proposed of just under $425,000, which is a little over a one and a third percent. Any questions on that expenditure information? Okay, I want to go into my best estimate for revenues at this time.
Bob, I've got one. I'm sorry. I couldn't get my hand up fast enough.
That's okay. Yeah. And I can't see everybody anyways when I'm sharing. Go ahead.
Yeah, back to the, on the unemployment. I understand the situation and I, but isn't this, isn't this just sort of an off year? I mean, didn't we have significantly more unemployment because of COVID? I'm asking. I really don't know that.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely 100% correct. But I believe that a lot of those characteristics will still be in place next year. They're not, they're not going to stop June 30th. We're still going to have some large liabilities. I hope not to the same degree. But we very well could be. And you'll see when we look at the revenues and when I've talked about kind of funding this with reserve money. If we don't spend 100,000, that's great. We won't take 100,000 from a reserve or whatever number we decide to appropriate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Sure.
Bob?
Yes.
What are, what are we reducing for central business services? It's 1370. I mean, who's, who's doing it? Why are we reducing? What's the implication, I guess?
Well, some of the ideas we're exploring is actually our shared business official. We're looking at possibly not continuing that service next year. And some of those duties, we are trying to explore possibly an in-house hire that could actually address some of the HR support that's needed as well as fill the role of, of that reduction. The other reduction in the central business office, which actually already has happened in this current year, was we brought accounts payable back in-house. That happened back in July.
Thank you.
Sure. Good questions.
Hey, Bob?
Yes.
Just quick, if you don't mind. Thank you for being so thorough again this year. I appreciate it. The transportation services, that 150, do you know roughly what the breakdown is for fuel? Because I know we anticipate, everyone anticipates fuel going up.
I can't tell you without going and pointing out exactly what the dollar amount is in there for fuel. But I can tell you, I did increase, actually, I think I do know. I think I took it from 150 to 220. We used to be at 250 was what we carried. But we were getting expenditures down around 100,000 or so. So we had reduced it back to 150. And I did put that back to, I believe it's 220. Could be off 10 or so, but I believe those are the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Bob, what I'd like to have presented is the need for the SRO. I think we decided a long time ago that it's important to have an SRO in each building that we have. And evidenced by the shooting in Colorado, not at the school, but in a grocery store, the need for it. What, what do we pay? We pay for the car, right? What else do we pay for?
We basically pay the, the full support for, for the officer because they are, they're full-time here as, as an employee of the sheriff's office, but full-time dedicated to our district. So any associated costs with that officer and equipment are included in a contractual rate that we pay to the county. And if it's a 10-month employee, it's less because we're not paying 100% of the cost of that person for 12 months. We just pay it for the 10 months that they're here.
And I believe it's an essential service, unfortunately, that our modern day environment needs. But I think it's, I feel better about having it for the safety of our kids and staff.
Absolutely. And as you know, as you know, that's
I'd like to add something there too, though. It's not just for safety. The SROs provide a lot of other good services to our kids and our families in our school.
They sure do.
Yes. And as, as you know, this is an area we've been looking at for multiple years where we originally had one, we went to two, and we actually planned to go to three a year or so ago, but because we haven't been able to open the middle school yet, we've seen those savings the last couple of years.
So Bob, those officers, I'm, I'm assuming they're taken out of the, their salaries are deducted from the sheriff's department budget and then added to ours?
No, we, we pay the sheriff a contractual amount. We don't, so the, the employees, they are not, I'm sorry, not the employees. The officers are not our employees. They are not on our payroll in any capacity. We are, I guess for lack of a better analogy, we're renting them. Just like a place may own cars or, you know, some type of machinery and you pay a certain amount to have that service or, or that piece of property or whatever. So we are paying the sheriff's department and the county a certain dollar amount for that to be here. So I'm sure they still show it on there. I mean, I don't do their budget, but I would think they still show all their expenditures. They just have a revenue coming in from the school district to offset their costs.
Okay.
It's no different than if we, when we used to transport students on our buses, but we still do it for, for BOCES, for preschool special education students. We pay our drivers, we pay the fuel, we pay all the costs associated with retirement, et cetera. And then BOCES would give us a check and that's a revenue we have. When we go through our revenue budget here, you'll see it. There's revenue we have coming in to offset some of those salaries we pay.
Yeah, no, I got that. I just, the thing that was in my head was it's a publicly funded position. Likewise, is the school. So I was just wondering. I, I get it now.
Okay. All right. So moving into our estimated revenues. This column here, initial, this is our current budget. This is what we put together for revenues a year ago when we built the budget that we took out to the community to vote on. This is what our best estimates are at this time of what the revenue may look like for next year. And I will point out again, that's at this time. And of course, any change. So right off the bat at the top, property tax. Every time we do the budget, when we go through draft one, we always leave the property tax rate right where it is. We leave the levy where it is. We show no increase in collection of taxes. The reason we do that is when we get through this whole process here this evening, we'll identify what we call our current gap, the difference between our revenues and our expenditures. And then we'll discuss as we continue on through the process, the ways to close a gap are to either increase your revenues, which your biggest ability to increase any revenue would be to increase taxes. So that's one piece to look at. And basically your other option is to reduce your expenditure somehow. So we will start with levy even. Other payments in lieu of taxes, these are many times referred to as pilots. These are agreements that companies have entered into with the school district, town, county, et cetera, where they are not on the regular tax roll. There's a separate agreement. And we bill them separately. And then they send checks in directly to us. And these agreements are changing a little bit. They have a life. And once they expire, sometimes they're renewed through a process. And sometimes those agreements are done. And when a pilot finishes and a property that has been on a pilot no longer is under a pilot, it gets returned to the tax rolls. So what that does is that increases the total assessed value of property on the tax rolls. So we had some fall off. So whereas we had budgeted $32,000 this year for pilots, it's down to 13 for next year. So in theory, a natural shift would be that this $19,000 that you no longer are collecting in pilots should be additional money you would want to collect on the levy. Because that, those properties are now on the tax rolls and are able to contribute money, which reduces what every other property needs. Again, I've kind of highlighted the changes here. I'm sorry, is there a question?
No, I said the tax rate goes down then.
Correct, correct. Everybody pays a little bit less because you're slicing the pieces of the pie smaller to get more pieces. You do see our sales tax revenue here, which we are budgeting that at a flat number. It does fluctuate a little year to year based on the current enrollment of all the school districts in the county. But it's somewheres in that neighborhood. You do see a large reduction in a revenue here of $50,000. So what this is, is we, for many years, we did some bussing for Head Start where we were able to bill them. So kind of an example that we just talked about with Jason. We, we would provide services, drivers, fuel, transport students, and then Head Start would pay us money. Now, under our current configuration with the UPK, we no longer can bill them for any transportation of our UPK programs. So that is a loss in revenue for us. Right above that is the BOCES shuttle. That's the program I referred to before where BOCES pays us. It's actually a contract through BOCES on behalf of the county to transport special education students that are preschool age to various programs. Interest in earnings is just, just what it sounds like. It's simply interest on any money that we have in bank accounts. And that is decreasing. It had been very low for a number of years, was starting to go back up, but this last year, interest rates have started to come down again. So in due diligence, we need to decrease that estimate for next year. We already discussed aid in general in our February meeting. And I did talk with you about how the governor proposed getting ready, getting rid of a lot of the expense-driven aids such as BOCES aid, transportation aid, software, and combining them all together. So for purposes here of having to put them each in a code, not knowing that that has gone through yet, I kind of had to take that whole services aid amount that we talked about in our February meeting and broke it out into where I think each category would fall into. And basically, we don't see a lot of changes here. We do see a little bit of a decrease here from what I had shown you in February. And I can tell you that is specifically in the area of what we call our high-cost aid or high excess cost aid. That's the money that we receive back for expenditures on special education students, both in districts. I'm sorry, not in district, both out-of-district private placements as well as BOCES programs. We do get aid back on that through the state. We do get aid back on that through the stack process. And I was taking the estimates from the governor's proposal. Since then, Kelly Marciano has worked with our third party administrator to really look more specifically. Through this year, what students are in what programs, because things change as you go through the year. And they've given me some more up to date, I guess I would say, estimates of what we could see in those high cost excess aid areas. And so I did need to reduce that a little bit from what we were looking at in February. Down below. Interfund transfers. This $45,000 would be money we want to offset the budget by taking it out of our debt service fund. I remind you that when we sold Florentine Hendrick. We received just, I think it was $224,100, I believe, for it. That went into a reserve for debt. It's got to be used to pay off debt service only associated with that building. And since we had five years of aid left coming back. We wanted to take the remaining money from that sale and spread that out over five years. So we actually, even though we didn't budget it here for last, or this current year. We did use it, $45,000 this year to pay some of our debt associated with Florentine. Since we didn't have the aid coming in, and we will continue to do that next year and the following three years. As I mentioned before, we did appropriate $250,000 of fund balance last year to cover deputy superintendent position. We generally do not appropriate fund balance year to year, and so we are not budgeting that there. But that doesn't hurt us because we don't have that cost. And last of all is our appropriated reserves. As you can see over here, this is what we had appropriated to put together this year's budget. And it will be similar to next year in concept of which ones we're doing. Unemployment, whereas I had said, let's appropriate 20,000. I'm suggesting we appropriate 75,000 because of those large cost increases that we just talked about. Just a reminder, the EBLR Employee Benefits Accrued Liability Reserve, that's where we have money in a reserve. To pay for time that people have accrued, and when they separate service with the district. There may be, for example, sick day buyouts at retirements, et cetera. Again, we fund that with our EBLR reserve, so we estimate what we might spend. And we tie that number in with our reserve. If we spend more than that, we'll take more out of that reserve. If we spend less, we'll take less out. And of course, our ERS reserve, as you know, we rely on heavily every year. And as we discussed back in February, we do need to look at funding that aggressively again to continue for future years. So. Total year to year, we are looking at revenues of down, down of a little bit here. Putting this all together, and what we've got here is just kind of summary of categories. Instead of all the lines I just went through with revenue, it's our major categories of aid. State aid, building aid, et cetera. And as you can see, we've got the same number here, revenue down to $78,000. So I've taken the estimated revenue of 31,677,13. Compare that to the current estimated expenditures of just under 32.2. And at this point, we're showing a budget gap of just over $500,000. And again, I want to point out that is without any levy increase at all, that's with current aid numbers. So we certainly hope that in the next couple of weeks, we get increases in state aid. That's our hope. We don't have any solid numbers yet. There are lots of rumors of federal funding out there, however. The rumble that we're hearing is that that federal aid districts are going to use, need to use it over multiple years. And there are going to be a number of strings tied to it where they've got to be used for specific things. For example, one of the ideas I've heard is that a certain percent may be required to be used just for summer programs. To basically supplement what people see as deficiencies during the pandemic for the regular instructional year. That has not gone through and been given to us as clear direction yet, but those are the types of things that are being talked about. Two pieces of information I wanted to give you here, just for reflection. So I have done our tax cap or our tax levy limit calculation. And that means without needing a super majority. The district could propose an increase of 3.71% on the levy, which is $368,000, without needing that super majority. This is a history since the tax levy limit has been put in place in our 1314 year. And I've shown what our tax cap is every year. And what we've actually gone out and done for the budget with an increase. And there were a few years where we were able to go at zero. We had some good state aid flowing, and we had very, very healthy reserves before we had to enter into significant capital project work. Since our financial situation is not quite where it was back then. We've been trying to consistently keep things balanced, and we've been well under our tax levy limit every year. Another piece here for your reference is our tax rate history, going back to 2006, 2007. Where the price per thousand dollars of assessment was $18.69. And you can see it has gone down since then, and currently, $14.66 is our current true value tax rate. I'd be happy to entertain any additional questions.
Bob?
Yes?
I'm just curious, with the tax rate history, and I know that in the last period of, say, 10 years, for example. A lot of townships have gone to 100% assessment. And that, do you think that has contributed to the lower rate per thousand that we see?
No, no, not really, because this is done on, we actually have seven different towns that make up our district. And they all have different, they don't all have, they each have a tax rate. Two, three, four of them might have the same tax rate, but it's not always the same year to year. This is what's, the number I presented here is our true value rate, which means. If every single one of those towns were at 100%, that's the number it would be. So for example, when I say we're currently at 1466. There are some towns that are at 1466. There are some towns that are not at 1466. They are at a different amount because they're not at 100% assessment. When they do go to 100%, they will then line up with this true value rate again. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you very much.
Bob, I thought I saw somewhere in here when I was doing my homework that you had acknowledged the decrease in rent there at the old Electromarc, uh, Electromarc building.
That would be part of our facilities budget, which we went over in January, correct? That was one of the specific line items we were able to reduce, not needing to budget as many months. That's correct.
So right now, then, we're on hold until we. Find out hopefully what's happening with state aid. Federal aid. And a decision of what to do has to be made by when?
Well, we actually do need to adopt a budget. It's scheduled to be done at the April 13th meeting. Because there's a couple of timeframes that we have to meet. One of the things is. When the board adopts the budget, we have to submit the property tax report card within 24 hours of that. So if our meeting is on the 13th, we will submit the property tax report card on the 14th. If we were to wait for the meeting after that, it would be past the deadline to submit this property tax report card.
So technically, at our next meeting, we've got to adapt the budget.
That's correct.
And hopefully, we'll know a little bit better what the state is doing. But I'm not holding my breath on that one.
Yes, we are, we are very hopeful, but we are not definite that that will happen. And basically, if we don't have that information at that time, we're going to just need to make some decisions based on the information we do have.
And Bob, it's my understanding that you'll be, you'll be trying to scrub these numbers too for the whole. Probably every day of your life between now and then, looking at different options.
Sure, sure. We constantly revisit them, and that's, that's not just me. That's the administrative team as a whole becomes involved with that also.
Okay. All right, thank you. We can probably expect a rather lengthy work session than with the budget at our next meeting. But I also know that you'll be prepared with options for us, as you always do, to, so that we will have things to consider. That will be prudent for the district. So. Until then. Thank you. Are we moving on to how to read a treasures report tonight?
Yes, and I can, I can jump in for just a second. We do have with us tonight Andrew de Blasio. Andrew is a very experienced in the school business finance. He's been doing this for quite a long time, and we've been very fortunate to be able to have his services here a couple of days a week in the district. It's one of those BOC services that, as I said, we won't be continuing next year, not because we're not pleased with the service we have. But Mr. De Blasio will not be able to fulfill this capacity as he has some other things going on next year. But he's going to spend a little bit of time just talking with you tonight about when you get those treasures reports. What are some things as a board member that you, you would want to look at? What's important, what means something, and what's just confusing and I really don't need to pay as much attention to? So I'm going to turn it over and let Andrew take it from here.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, the superintendent, Pullan, invited me to come to the meeting. I appreciate that. I think he saw that I was too relaxed and enjoying myself too much. So he said it was time for a public meeting, and I had to speak at it. So I obliged. I want to start sharing my screen here with you guys. And I think that should do it. Is that, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So what we looked at, we wanted to take a high level overview of what the treasure report presents. What are we looking at exactly? And then I wanted to say, well, I'm going to kind of highlight the things that I find important or things that I would look at if I was a board member. So we went through, and we did this for the general fund section of your treasury report that is actually in your packet tonight. The treasury report that you're approving. And so we took the general fund section, and we're going to walk through it. It's probably stuff I would expect most of you have heard or remember or know. But we're just kind of going to look at the high level view. What do I find interesting? What do I find important? So we're going to go through that, and what we do is you take this, what we do for the general fund. And you can transfer it to all the rest of the funds in the detail. The things that we find treasury reports are required to show you are your cash balances, revenue status report, and your appropriation or budget status report. And so I've been in this business a long time. I don't think I've ever seen two districts with the same treasury report. But those main, those main functions are in there. And again, this is a report for you, so it's kind of usually tailored to the board of the district that is requesting the treasures report. So we'll go through briefly, and we'll look at, this is the cover sheet. This is your cash balances. Again, part of the requirement by the state for you to have on hand. And in purple is the general fund, main operating fund of the district. And this is the, the budget for this fund is voted on annually by the district residents. So that's your cash balances for the general fund. And it's kind of like a checkbook. It shows you cash receipts, cash disbursements, and then the bank rec below it. Which shows you where are those funds and do they equal? And the goal is there, you want the closing balance of your book to match the closing balance of your bank. School lunch fund, again, tracks revenues and expenses, expenditures associated with the operation of your school lunch and breakfast programs. Federal finance is also referred to as a special aid fund. This is where the district accounts for your grants. And please interject if you have questions, okay? And I have two screens going, so I may not see if you're raising your hand, so just feel free to shout it out. Capital fund is where all the capital expenditures are tracked. Again, this is for buses and capital project work. This fund is not to be confused with the capital reserves. After voter approval money is transferred from the capital reserve to the capital fund to be spent. And this is where we would track it, and these are your balances currently in that fund. Trusted agency accounts for payroll deductions that were held on behalf of employees. The name kind of gives it away that the employees is trusting us to ensure this money and to remit it the way it's supposed to be. Again, this is going to show federal and state taxes, social security withholdings, and the employee share of healthcare insurance. This is a private purpose trust fund, TE fund. This money is not belonging to the district. It is, we are custodians of the funds, and it's used for scholarships. And the debt service fund contains money that may only be used to pay debt service. And Bob mentioned this earlier, this is where the sale of your Florentine Hendrick money went. And this money will be used, I believe, annually to offset the pay or the lost bond aid on those, on that building that was remaining. Is that correct, Bob? I think for the most part.
Yes, that, that's correct, because we had about $45,000 a year of state aid that would be coming in. That we no longer are getting because they won't let us basically double dip, get, get the sale of the building and the aid. So we're short $45,000. That's why we will take $45,000 from the reserve to offset that.
And it, the.
Not the reserve, the debt service fund, sorry.
And the goal is to do that for the remaining life of that building?
Correct.
Okay, here's something not necessarily in all treasury reports. You guys get a trial balance. The accountants love this, board members not so much, but there's some things you can, I would pick off of this. First thing you want to do is go down the bottom, and it tracks your debits and all the debits and credits that are made in your accounting system. You want those to balance, right? Good accounting, your debits and your credits always balance. So that's the first thing you want to look for. Then we scroll up to the top, the 200, the 200 accounts here, the highlighted ones. They're going to match what was on the cover sheet for the general fund. So that's where all your cash is, and you can see that right here. So that totals up, and you want to see that that matches the total found right here under the general fund. So again, that just kind of tells you, hey, the bookkeeping looks like it's, they're doing the right stuff. Scroll down a little bit. Here in pink is your encumbrance, reserve for encumbrances. This is for all the expenses where purchase orders have been issued. And this number should tie to your appropriation status or your budget status report under encumbrances outstanding. So when you see that number, that should tie to a report that we're going to see later in the treasures report. And something else, it's good for the board to have highlighted numbers. These are your reserve balances. Okay, so that's something that you like to know when Bob's talking reserves, and we're going to use some reserves, and. It's good for you to have that balance history. So that's something I would keep an eye on. And you know what? You wouldn't necessarily see big fluctuations of those numbers during the year. They usually happen at year end and/or at the beginning of the year. So the next report is the revenue status report. Okay, and the columns in here, what do the columns mean to me? Well, the first one is the original estimate. That's your approved. Well, the first one is the original estimate. That's your approved budget. When you put the budget into the books, your revenues and your appropriations, appropriations or expenses should equal. So that's the first column. Second column is adjustments that we see throughout the year and we're going to correct them here. If you look at our original estimate line, I'll give you a real property tax is a great example. When, when business officials are doing their budget, they know how much the tax levy is going to be. But we don't know exactly how much is going to come from STAR. So for, for simplicity, we're going to put it all in the real property tax line. So it's very clear. It's very simple to follow. That's the number you are expecting to see and that's where you see it. And then the adjustment is, well, how much are we going to get from STAR? So that's the adjustment line. So we say, hey, you know what? We're not going to collect all that in real property tax. Some of it is going to come from STAR. So let's put that in its appropriate category. So you see that adjustment. Real property goes down, STAR goes up. Another great example is Formula Aid. When we get all our runs from the state, they're into basic formula aid. They're not broken out into the categories where we ultimately receive them. And I always used to get frustrated because everybody said, well, lottery is giving you, giving you a bunch of money for schools. Well, not really. What they're using the lottery for is a way to fund the, the aid that they already promised us. So I wouldn't say it necessarily increased the aid schools got. It was a different way for them to fund the aid that schools got. So when we receive our checks during the year, it is broken out in these categories that you, that Bob shows here. So it's not all in basic formula aid. It comes to us and they actually say, hey, this, this portion is from lottery aid. So that's why we have those different categories. So we'll adjust the, we'll adjust the revenue to show, hey, it's, it's not coming in the basic formula aid category. It comes in these other categories. And if you look at them, when you're doing budget development, there's no category called lottery grant. There's no budget category called lottery aid. But that's again, how they, when they fund it, it comes into those categories and that's why we adjust the budget. But totaled up, they're going to equal our basic formula aid. Very simply, current estimate is the original plus the adjustments and that's our current estimate. Year to date, this is revenue received through the date of this report. Again, this one's back. It's a, it's, it was run on March 19th, but it's for, as of January 31st, if I'm not mistaken. And this anticipated balance is, okay, this is what we should expect to receive. It's the difference between the original and the current estimate, or excuse me, the original and the year to date received, or I'll get this right. So the difference between the current estimate and the year to date, and this is anticipated balance. And some of these we can, we still need to adjust. Bob, it brings like the highlight is, well, why is there 1776 in real property tax? That is what happens after you do your warrant, there's always changes to the assessments and, and things change after the fact. So that's telling us, we're probably not going to get that 1776 because our taxes are closed and we've collected them all. So we're going to need to do an adjustment to get rid of that because we're not really anticipating that. But for the rest of these, like sales tax revenue, yeah, we're still anticipating the amount we, we budgeted. And we'll see where that comes in. That, that usually gets issued, I think shortly. It will know, maybe April. And the last column in our revenue is our excess revenue. Okay. And I'll give you an example here. Sales crap usually don't budget that. You're not expecting it and there, and I don't know the details, but there was something year to date, 4,200 bucks. So it, excess revenue over what we budgeted is $4,200 because we weren't expecting it. It came in, it came in higher than, or higher than anticipated. So that's generally the, the revenue report. And you know, you will keep an eye on the total excess revenue. If that gets to be a huge number, it's, it's a question. You know, you ask, hey, why is that so much bigger? And it might be something simply as, oh, we needed to adjust the revenue. We're not really going to get it. It's not, we're not really excess revenue. Or the answer might be, there was a windfall for this reason, and that's why we're showing an excess revenue. And, oh, I went over, I got ahead of myself. I kind of highlighted it for you, the, the changes that we talked about. Real property went from real property to STAR. One thing we did notice, it's highlighted here in blue or teal. Interest in earnings. Bob and I looked at it goes, wow, that's really low. We know interest rates are down. But that's raises a question to us, hey, we probably should have more than 1,900. Even though interest rates are down, we should be expecting a little more than 1,900. So we've got some questions out to the CBO. Hey, how are you recognizing your interest? How are you prorating it to all the different funds? Because that's kind of, that's lower than we would expect to see. We know it's going to be low, but not that low at halfway through the year. So we have a question. That's something, you know, again, it's small dollar amounts, but it's one of those things keep, you know, you see as a board member or as a business official and it makes you ask the question. And then down here I highlighted the purple and the green showing you the basic formula getting adjusted out into the different categories that the district will receive it as. Appropriation is status, budget status report is the next report. Initial appropriation or your initial budget is the first column. The second column is your adjustments. And this is a, we have to do budget transfers are reflected here, which you see a lot during your budget, your meetings. And purchase orders that are open at the end of a year are reflected here as an adjustment for the subsequent year. So you'll see that in the adjustments. So the adjustments are kind of twofold. Carryover purchase orders and any adjustments you need to make during the current year to cover costs that come in higher or lower than anticipated. Or they need to move some contingency, budget contingency funds. So current appropriation, very simply your initial plus the adjustment is your current appropriation. Year to date expenditures, this is what the expenditures we've made to the date of this report. The encumbrance outstanding is the purchase order has been issued. So we need to set those funds aside because fund accounting is very important. Purchasers are very critical. You, you'd need to, if you're going to make a purchase, the purchase order secures the funds so that you don't spend them twice. So for the encumbrance outstanding, that's telling us purchasers have been issued for all those, those numbers in that column based on those account codes. And the last column, this is the unencumbered balance or the amount that has not been spent. And this is available to be encumbered. When you look through the column, you, you, you don't like to see the negatives. We clean those up. I said, I know you do budget adjustments, I think just about at every meeting. So Bob's very good at keeping this cleaned up. And you'll see some negatives and also some negatives he has in there. So he knows legal and he talked about it in his budget presentation. Legal went up a lot this year and he's, so I think he increased it a little bit on his budget for next year. There was discussion about it that the board knows we spent more in that code than we budgeted in it for good reasons. And the big thing to look, go to the bottom right corner. That's the, this famous saying in our school business, go to the bottom right corner. That should not be a negative number. Okay. 99% of the time that is not a negative number. Line items might be, but not necessarily the bottom should not be. Okay. So you might see it like we saw some negatives in that last column. We do not want to see it in our total. So again, this is the available balance. Now take that with a grain of salt too, because we're looking at some things, Bob, Bob knows this. We might need to, we need to encumber. We have a bond anticipation note here. You see in this last column, it's showing 1.9 million unencumbered. Well, we know we have a debt service payment. So Bob and I talked, we're going to do a purchase order for that bond anticipation note because we're going to have to pay that off. And that's going to bring that unencumbered balance down. So that's something to be, that business officials need to be, be weary of. And Bob knows this, so it's not a big issue, but for inexperienced or new business officials, they need to know, just because my unencumbered balance says 7.6, don't think I can do, start spending 7.6. Some of that money has already been budgeted and accounted for. You just need to go through the, the paperwork and the process of putting aside the money, putting the encumbrance in by doing a purchase order for those amounts. And that's it for the, how to read a treasury report or what I would look at if I was a board member and I, things I would find important. Any questions? Was that good and that thorough that there's no questions?
I got, I got a question. So going to revenue status reports for the other funds. Should, as a board member, should I be paying attention to those?
Yeah, I would kind of run through them the same way you did this one, just to be aware. And, and you guys are very fortunate. You got a very experienced business official, a great superintendent. They're on top of this stuff. So it's not as, it's not as worrisome as if you had new people in there doing these, but kind of do that same practice, that same walkthrough. Just for your comfort sake, you can look at it. And when you have questions, just send Bob an email or call your superintendent. And these, these gentlemen are competent. We'll get you the answers that you're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for a thorough walkthrough of that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes. It's always good to have a review for people who are familiar with it. Just, just a reminder and I'm sure for people who are watching and aren't used to doing, watching these reports, it's enlightening to, to see what, how detailed it is and how things are kept track of.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard. Over the years, the state has always tried to make it easier for the average person to look at it. And I see Bob laughing because all the business officials say, you know, we're looking at it saying, it's harder for me to understand. How's it going to be easier for the average person or the board member to understand? So we try to keep it simple as we can. And we do our best to try and explain it to everybody. And again, if anybody has questions, you, you know, always call your business official or your superintendent and they'll be happy to answer them for you.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Thank you for being with us and it was a good explanation and we wish you well if we're not going to see you anymore. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on then and get back to a regular window. Tina, we still have Andrew's screen up.
Andrew, do you know how to? Want me to stop your sharing?
Yeah, go ahead and stop my sharing because my, the menu is not coming up from the bottom of the screen.
There we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and good night. We'll move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. John and Jason. Are there questions or concerns, discussion?
Before the, before the consent agenda is approved, just so you're aware, the minutes, March 9th minutes, the regular session returned and the time we adjourned, I had the times backwards. So I fixed them. So you are approving the correct ones. I do have the times right in the end, but just wanted to make you aware, they are fixed.
Okay, thanks. Jason?
I only have one question on line H.
All right, let us find it. What page would that be? Oh, page three, maybe? Election workers.
Project.
Oh, no. Okay.
Award the bid. On page two, item H.
Yep, page two, letter E.
I'm sorry. I thought you said eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, outlay.
This is probably a question for Michael or Bob. With building materials and any construction related materials being abnormally high right now, are we at any risk of this number changing come the time for the, the renovation?
No, once, once you award a bid, the contractor is obligated to perform the work that was described completely for that price.
And it goes both ways, right? So if the, if a sheet of plywood goes from $35 down to where it used to be $15 or $16.
They get a bigger profit margin.
Okay. I wasn't sure on that. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Izetta?
You need to unmute Izetta.
There, I got it. It takes me a minute to get there. I just had a quick questions on our election workers. And I know from a regular government election, if I'm running for a position or any of my family is running for a position, I cannot work that board. I wanted to make sure that this didn't come into that problem with Brandy and Carly.
I have not received a petition back from Carly yet.
Oh, okay.
I haven't received a completed backup.
I did look at item up in, in the law book that I have. And it wasn't an issue with school law. Assuming that election workers and election inspectors are the same thing. I think my law book said inspectors. And we're saying workers. Is that right?
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that are going to count the votes and all that kind of stuff. So they'd be the same thing as an inspector at a general election, I would think.
Although I would say that if, my law book is an older book, so I don't have a current one. But I would assume that even though a person is proved, if it turned out to be an illegal situation, that person would not be whatever, put on.
Right, right.
Would that be correct, Michael?
Well, not speaking specifically to any particular situation, what I can do is assure the board that Tina will be going to a training that's run through a local law firm to make sure that all the, the voting procedures, everything is up to par and all those things are legal and accounted for. So rather than speak to one specific item tonight, I just give you that comfort to say all those areas of concern will be addressed. To make sure.
I just wanted to make sure because I've done so many years of government elections that when I see something in the school board, I'm never sure exactly how the two mesh.
Yeah, and right. We're going to do that regardless of candidate or inspection worker. You know, we're going to make sure that everything we're doing is up to par with that law.
Right. Which is fine with me. And I don't have a problem with Carly working it, even if, I mean, with Brandy working it, even if Carly does run. It's just that, can she work it?
Well, I think we've got to be very objective with all candidates and with all workers, regardless of who, who's there. Okay? So I think it's important to keep it on a global and a general scale versus speaking about specific candidates or specific employees. I would just encourage the board to remember, you know, all candidates and all workers are going to be treated the same.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. I'll take, take the vote. John?
Yes.
Linda? Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
And me, yes. So this motion is carried. Michael, would you like us to pause here? Before we go on to the
We're still waiting on one guest, so I think you can keep going.
We'll proceed.
Yep.
All right.
Keep going.
All right. We're on page five, everyone. The, we have some roll call votes here. So the first one is the language approval for the May eighteen twenty twenty-one budget vote. A motion to put proposition one on the floor. John, Paul?
Tina.
Any questions, discussion?
No.
Tina, would you take the role?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Good, thank you. Proposition two, bus purchases. A motion to put proposition two on the floor.
I will.
Who said that?
Me.
Thanks, Tina. And a second, Linda. Discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Tina, would you take the role?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Moving to proposition three, annual appropriations for the Wolkett Public Library and the Rose Free Life Library. A motion, please. Zeta and Linda? A discussion? Tina, would you take the role?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Okay, proposition, resolution four. The notice of public hearing and annual school district election motion.
I will.
Tina?
Tina and Jason? Discussion? Tina, would you?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution five. While I, it's my number five. Resolution to authorize the unsealing and opening of the ballot box. Motion for approval. Paul, go ahead and nodding. Discussion? I've got Paul, you're a second. Tina, would you take the role?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul? Izetta?
Yes.
And our last one. A motion to approve and authorize the settlement agreement. A motion, please. Tina?
Sure.
Discussion? All right, Tina, would you take the role?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Michael.
We are all set.
We are set to go into executive session. For those of you who are zooming in with us, we're going to be going into executive session at this time. When we come out, we do have a few additional items that we will be voting on when we return.
So Cinda, just to correct you, I don't think we're going to vote on anything when we come out. There's only a couple portions as far as good news and the quick update from me. But we need a motion to go into executive session, just a quick reminder.
But I had, I had just before we came on here four resolutions for additional additions to the agenda, which would
Okay, okay, yes, I see it now. I see it. I didn't have that there. You're right. That's correct. Sorry.
It will take a little time because the public doesn't have it, so I won't read those resolutions.
Correct, you're correct. I'm sorry.
So we'll be doing those, those four when we return.
That's correct.
Mr. Pollan, do you have an approximate time you might return?
I don't. I would assume maybe eight fifteen to play it safe.
Okay.
I guess that's my best estimate.
For the guests, if anyone would like to rejoin about eight fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Tina, Tina, if you could, you, you could put the guests in a breakout room that just to put us on hold and we would sit in there until we were welcomed back into general session, where we wouldn't have to try to log back on.
I have never done the breakout rooms, Mr. Pollan, of you. What are your thoughts?
I think we'd better stick to what we know we can do.
Okay, that was just a suggestion. I was just
Well, we'll work on it for another time.
Sorry.
Cinda, you want to do your motion?
Yes, a motion, please, to go into executive session to discuss, discuss a particular legal issue.
John or Tina?
And Linda. Discussion? All right, a vote. John?
Yes.
Linda? Yes. Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I am going to stop the recording.
Okay, is everybody in, Tina?
Yes.
We're back in regular session now. And at this time, I, we have additions to the agenda. And so I need a motion to, first of all, to add additional items to the agenda. Thank you, Paul. A motion, a second. Izetta? Any discussion? All in favor? John?
He said yes.
Linda? Yes. Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, motion is passed. The a mo, I would put a motion for the first resolution put on, and once we have it on the floor, I'll read it at that point. A motion to put the first item on the agenda.
I did do them separate resolutions, but you can do them individually or we can do it all as long as you'd like.
Um, I think it'd be easier for me to do them separately.
Okay.
Linda, a motion and a second. Jason, thank you. Is the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to the education law, accepts the resignation of Jessica Hoffen as teacher effective April two, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? All right, we'll take the vote. John?
Yes.
Linda? Yes. Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jasons?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. A motion to put the second resolution in.
Tina?
Tina and second, please. This is the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of schools education law, accepts the resignation from Cody Lang of Earl's Madified Volleyball Coach, effective March twenty-four, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? All right, take the vote. John?
Yes.
Linda? Yes. Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta? Motion is
Yes.
The third one on your list, motion to put it on the floor.
Make a motion. Izetta?
This is the resolution. Be it resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to the education law, approves the following individuals to work various enrichment programs during the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one school year, conditional upon criminal history record check according to Commissioner's Regulation eighty-one point eleven and part eighty-seven. The names are Kristen McMorris, grant program teacher at thirty dollars an hour. Discussion? Take the vote. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason? Izetta?
Yes.
And the fourth one on your list, a motion to put it on the floor?
Tina?
Tina and Paul? I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to the education law, accepts the resignation of Kevin Sharp as art teacher effective June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Discussion?
Yes.
Linda? Yes. Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jasons? Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is that completes the items that we added to the agenda. Going back to our our agenda, I'd like to move just right on to the superintendent's late, the superintendent update. And we'll, we'll, if you have good news, you can just hold it until next time.
All right, so we'll briefly, last Friday, you saw that there was a update from the Center for Disease Control that made the recommendation for social distancing to go from six feet down to three feet. So that's caused quite a buzz in the education community because some states have adopted that three-foot social distancing mark. Unfortunately, New York State has not done so yet, but we're waiting and anticipating that that direction will come. So we're honestly obligated to New York State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health. However, in anticipation of that change coming, I have started working with the district administrators to start thinking about a return to school. And what we would do is we would target probably an anticipated return date of approximately April nineteenth, where we would return to school four days under the current conditions. So we would have Monday, Tuesday, we would take Wednesday still for office hours, ongoing staff development, deep cleaning, things of that nature, return for Thursday and Friday, and continue to do that. At this point in time, we feel, given the nature of what the teachers have endured, the office hours, the planning period, and the deep clean is something that's very important to us. As you, you can recall, it's been some time since we've had those conversations about school situations where people have come down, tested COVID positive, where we've had to take a pause or go fully remote. And we feel like our plan has worked as effective as it could. And we want to try to minimize the impact and a return to the social setting. You know, Bob talked earlier in his budget presentation about the, the feeling that a specific percentage of aid is going to, you know, be required to be used during summer program. We feel like the April nineteenth would give us a return for the last quarter of school. And as things continue to change and evolve from the State Education Department and the Department of Health, we'll continue to evolve with those things with the goal of anticipating a full return to instruction this summer, hopefully in a five-day-a-week capacity for the students to attend summer programs, as well as with the intent of returning to some normalcy in the fall. But again, we're waiting on state ed guidance and we're waiting for the Department of Health. As you know, I meet with the Wayne County Department of Health weekly. And right now, we're basically in a, a holding pattern, waiting for some updated guidance to come down. But we'll take that news as good news and we think that the restrictions being lifted from six feet down to three and hopefully the potential for the fifty percent capacity restriction being lifted. We'll continue with the mask-wearing approach. We'll continue with the hand hygiene. We'll continue with the rest of the social etiquette components. But we are slowly starting to return as many things to normal as possible. Any questions, comments, or feedback on that? And then lastly, just to give you a quick update, last night, the Strategic Planning Committee met. We spent two hours revisiting our work that we started on March fifth. You know, it was a great evening last night. We're really starting to narrow our scope toward vision and mission. We had four fantastic student participants that really contributed greatly to what the adults had started. And the voice from our student body was well represented by our four student committee members. And we have our next meeting that we're, we're anticipating to continue that work on April eighth, and we hope that we're able to share something with you. I would anticipate probably in May for, for a draft. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And at this point, we've completed our agenda.
Can I interrupt for just one second? Did anyone have any nominations for the BOCES board? I just need to confirm that we don't have any nominations for the BOCES board, candidates for the BOCES board. Thank you.
A motion to adjourn? Oh, all hands are going on? Izetta and John? Any discussion? All in favor? John? Oh, you're all waving at me? Let's roll down it. Don't, John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and good night.